All right. All right, so we are going to start the Board Committee meetings today, Tuesday, October 21st. We're starting at 3 o'clock. The first committee that we have is Policy Governance and Legislation Committee. I'm ready to go, y'all, so let's do it. I'm in form, I need to do roll call. Roll call, please.
Amber Hewitt Garcia, District 8.
Natalie McKinney, District 2.
Roderick Richmond, interim superintendent.
Joyce Doris Coleman, District 9.
Stephanie Love, District 3.
Staff as well.
Terrence Britton, Regional Superintendent Northwest.
Kimberly Chandler, Regional Superintendent Northeast.
Alicia Kiner, Deputy Chief of Academics.
Shontae Rodway, Chief of Student Support Services.
Gary Hannah, Chief of Staff.
Jermaine Johnson, Chief Communications.
Tito Langston, Business Operations.
Crystal Oliver, Chief Human Resources.
Bill White, Research.
Michael Bates, Director of Discipline.
Stacy Davis, Director of Enrollment and Attendance.
Monica Jordan, Director in the Office of the Chief of Staff.
Tyvonne Gordon, Executive Director of Early Childhood.
Rachel Addison, Executive Director of Performance and Leadership Development.
Cedric Smith, Director of School Operations.
Kevin Malone, Operations Director.
Michelle Stewart, Facilities.
You're here?
Six.
Justin Bailey, General Counsel.
All right, we have everybody in the room. All right, so let's start this again. Let's start with the first committee, which is Policy Governance and Legislation. That is Chair Love and Co-Chair McKinney. Call to Order is 1.01. Number two is Policy Legislative Affairs, Policy Updates, and then the closing discussion. All right, I don't think we have, do we have any opening discussion? Does anyone have anything around that they want to, that's not on the agenda? No? Okay, then could, Dr. Richmond, could we ask, or is that Mr. Bailey, could we ask for the policy updates?
Yes, I believe that Ms. Stewart or someone from the policy, Ms. Stewart's office. Ms. Alicia's gonna walk us through some proposed policy revisions.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today we have for review of the Board, nine policies. All right, we'll start with our first policy data dashboard. We are recommending temporary suspension of this policy. We're recommending suspension until January the 27th to ensure that the development of the superintendent's evaluation targets, as well as the district key performance indicators, are aligned with the academic, the current academic plan and focus. Also, there are some areas that support this policy and feed into it that also warrant alignment. The superintendent's efforts around aligning contracts to review the return on investments, as well as the Board's theory of action, the business systems review policies, and its Phase 1 of the facilities plan. Mr. Bill White's area is building out the data dashboard, and his team is working on that, so if there's any specifics, that area can speak to those. The next policy is on Red Page 6, if people want to follow along. Policy 2001, Annual Operating Budget. We're also recommending the suspension of the annual operating budget policy until January 27th of next year. This is to ensure that the Board has ample opportunity to establish and approve the district's priorities. These priorities are included in the policy, and they inform the budget development process. The next policy is on Red Page 16. This is a statutory revision, Policy 3007, Student Wellness. It increases the amount of physical activity required for elementary students from 130 minutes per school week to 40 minutes per school day. This, again, is a statutory requirement that the district, is a mandate that the district must implement. The requirement says that the physical activity must be unstructured play outside. It cannot include physical education class or any time where there's an electronic device used permitted. Our next policy is on Red Page 28. This is the policy on Conflict of Interest. The scope of this policy has been revised to remove vendors and suppliers and limit the scope to all Memphis Shelby County Schools employees. In the past, the policy included only key employees and senior management for certain disclosure requirements. Now those requirements will be implemented for all employees. Now senior-level employees will file a disclosure statement annually, and other employees will complete the disclosure if a potential conflict arises and whenever possible before they begin to engage in that activity. So in the past, there had been senior employees, and employees would have to fulfill that disclosure annually. The next policy is on Policy 30, excuse me, on Red Page 32. And I would like to take Policy 5014, Grading System, for grades pre-K, K through 5, excuse me, pre-K through 5, and Policy 5015, Grading System for Grades 612, together. They include the, they include the same change in two different policies because it addresses a student's in grades K-8. First, it aligns with the state law that requires local Boards of Education to develop and implement a policy to include on or with a KH student's report card of the results or scores of their most recently administered universal reading screener, or dyslexia screener. The revisions also include language allowing the superintendent to delegate responsibilities in the policy. And of course, that is, that again is for both policies, 5014, as well as 5015. The next policy is on page, is on Red Page 50. This is Policy 6051, Interscholastic Athletics. This is another statutory requirement, a change in the law. It includes language allowing the superintendent to delegate responsibility in the policy. And the change in law, it aligns to the new state law that requires districts to allow virtual school students the opportunity to participate in interscholastic athletics. Those are the policy changes that are included in your packet. I'd like, before I go to our last policy change, I would like to note the point of information, which is on Red Page 58. This is Student Conduct 6022. It aligns with the state, a change in state law that says districts, that if districts report a credible threat to the state or local law enforcement, then the district must notify all of the parents in the particular school that involves the threat. Revisions to the policy also include language around rights of due process for students when they are experiencing exclusionary disciplinary practices, as well as language that talks about the authority of the principal to suspend from 1 to 10 days. And there are two stipulations that go along with that, that a behavior improvement plan for suspensions of more than five days is prepared, as well as the suspension, the submission of a suspension notification report to the regional superintendent for a single suspension between 5 and 10 days. Also, you, Board members, there should be in the back of your packets another policy that we're adding on for this afternoon. This is Policy 1015. Board District General Counsel. There are two revisions, proposed revisions to this policy. The first one, if you're looking at your document, is going to be on the second page. It removes the Department of Labor and Employee Rights, as well as the Department of MWBE from under the General Counsel. And the other revision clarifies language around settlement agreements. It clarifies that the General Counsel can approve and sign settlements requiring payments up to $100,000, including those settlements for a specific performance, as well as clarifies that any settlements requiring payment over the $100,000 must be approved and signed by the executive committee. So those are the policies and the points of information that we have for your review today. Are there any questions?
Before we start with questions, I'd just like to recognize that two additional Board members, Board Member Tawana Murphy and Board Member Sable Ote, arrived, so. Now, any questions to anyone?
Thank you.
Keith Williams.
We're suffering in your regulations and rules that requiring the district to offer more time for students to do what in the classroom? It was the opposite of teaching and learning, I know that.
Yes, sir.
But having some structured playtime, or what is it?
Yes, sir. The new law requires that districts now, that students now have 40 minutes per day of physical activity. In the past, it was 130 minutes per week. But there's a law, there's a change in the law that now requires districts to have 40 minutes per day for physical activity for elementary students.
Is that K-6, K through 6?
I think it's K-5, but, yes, sir.
So during that time, what will they do, play?
It's unstructured physical activity.
So who's going to, who's, is it, is that, will that become the teacher's responsibility to find 60 minutes of the day to do that? Who will, who will do it?
That's a great question, as far as how implementation for that will occur, and I'll have to divert to administration around the particulars of that.
So if it takes away from the instructional time, if it takes away from instructional time, and we do not show improvement and growth in that, say heaven forbid, we go down in it. Why are you saying, and what measure are they using to determine that students need more physical activity in school during instructional time?
Yes, sir, those are questions that probably came up during the state's review of that particular change in law. But once they went through all of those questions, they did determine that we have to do the 40 hours, which is a mandate for us.
So whose job will it be to do that? Would that be the teacher's responsibility as well?
I know it is the district's responsibility as far as how that's implemented, and whether or not it flows down to, how it's communicated to the individual teacher would be part of the administration's implementation of it.
Will it be structured time, or will it be whatever they want to do?
If I may interject for a moment. Board Member Williams, can we direct those to Dr. Richmond? She's okay? Okay.
It's 130 a week now.
Board Member Williams, thank you for your question. As Ms. Green shared, it doesn't have to be structured, but it is statute, so classroom teachers are pretty much charged with ensuring that there's unstructured 40 minutes for students to participate in physical activity.
Will it have to be in one 40-minute block? Can there be 20 minutes here and 20 minutes there?
I don't know if they're monitoring the implementation to that extent, but we're just following it and ensuring that it's 40 minutes per day.
So I guess my final question is this. Then what instruction will be lost? Because if you're going to consume 40 minutes of the day required to do activities, what will you lose instructional? What subjects are you going to cut back on and not teach or not give the same dosage? Because you'll have to make some adjustments for that.
Yes, sir, that's, that's an excellent question. Again, what we're, what we try to encourage all schools and classrooms to do is to ensure maximum time on task. But I will tell you, we must start looking at how to better extend our day because with all of the regular requirements that we're now being held to uphold it, there's only so much you can do during a seven-hour day.
That would be a very expensive feat if you extended today because you'd have to pay for another hour of commitment.
Yes, sir, but that's why we're also doing a lot of before and after-school tutoring and support for our students, even outside of the regular day, because we know it's hard to compact all of the things that we're being required to do within the regular seven-hour day.
State have a measure, as they do for academics, with the testing, state testing, to determine whether or not a student is doing well or learning or not. Will they have a measure for that?
At this, at this time, I'm not aware of any assessment that has been aligned with this policy.
But you do know that it will, it will make, we would have to hire more people to do it.
At this point, we haven't had to hire additional people to do it. We're just asking teachers to do their best to implement it.
So the teacher is expected to give 40 minutes of their instructional time to playtime, and then go back and teach?
Well, if you recall, Board Member Williams, when you and I were probably in school, you always looked forward to going outside for recess. I can remember during the time when I was in school, we'd go outside for anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour each day. So I don't see this as being something that's out of the ordinary from how school used to be designed in the past. What has perhaps made this something that look, that people may look upon as being additional is that now we have, most schools have a 90-minute block. We're being asked to have intervention for students. We're being asked to pull students out for required tutoring and things like that. So I think physical education of our students sometimes has been through the physical education teacher, but I can recall being a student, particularly in elementary school, where I looked forward to going outside every day for PE and recreation, and unstructured physical activity and recreation. And so I think this is what it is. Now, I don't know what the impetus behind this was or is, but some people may have gotten complaints that kids aren't getting outside enough and being physically active. And we know being physically active, your physical health, as well as your mental health, are interconnected. And we know during COVID, many of our students who may have had underlying conditions and who may not have been as physically active as they should have been, those underlying conditions were exacerbated because students weren't being physically active. So I think it's important when we think of how they're interconnected for students. I want a more physically active student. When we look at our health indexes, we see a number of our students, they have high BMIs, they're not being as active as they should. So again, I know that the devil is in the details, but it's a statute. We're required to implement it as best we can. And just as much as I see a countervailing narrative around it being negative, I can also see it being a positive for our students when it comes to physical health and physical activity.
Will that be measured in any way through testing? How will they measure the success or failure of that? Because I'm sure that our academics will go down. Because they're taking away from instruction. You're going to have this more time for constructive play, or whatever you're going to call it. How will they measure the success of that?
I think it may be worth something, maybe worth us looking into if there's a way for us to put a methodology in place for us to look at, do our BMIs go down? And is there some type of correlation between students' BMIs and their health indexes getting better? And do we see a correlation of that through students doing better on their assessments because they're more active and they're more physically healthy, which translates into them being more mentally healthy and resilient and engaged in physical activity?
All right, thank you. Let me get, Dr., thank you, Dr. Richmond. Thank you for those questions, Board Member Williams. I have Board Member Hewitt Garcia next.
Thank you. My question's about the policy we added, 1015, under the Board District General Counsel. Under contractual obligation authority, we struck, "The General Counsel shall be authorized to enter into professional service contracts up to $74,999, and settle disputes in amount not to exceed $100,000." But in the, the language that's added in red, we don't mention professional service contracts. So will that ability still remain, and where does that live?
I don't, I don't know if I need to be recognized because this is a committee meeting, but thank you, and you see my light is on. I was actually, so Ms. Green mentioned that there are two proposed changes, there are actually three. One is administrative alignment in those two offices that Ms. Green talked about. The second is the settlement authority for the Officer General Counsel. The third actually is engagement of outside counsel specifically. And what the third proposed change would be is that the Officer General Counsel does have the authority to enter into professional services or engaging outside counsel for an undefined amount. And the reason behind that, the problem that, as a lawyer, the General Counsel runs into and engages outside counsels because we never know what that end cost will end up looking like. If it's a matter that, if litigation matter drags on for four, five, six years, as we've seen in some cases, you're kind of in a hard place if the, if the bills start to get close to $70,000, and the question is, what do you do with your outside counsel? So that's what that, that proposed change is intended to remedy.
So there's no limit on professional service contracts?
For legal services.
For legal services, but whatever. Now that there are multiple things under your office, do you have the ability to sign a professional service agreement not related to legal matters?
That's a fair call out, and we could certainly add language that would limit it and clarify that anything outside of legal services is capped at $74,000 or $75,000.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, even thinking about our executive services offices, right? Like, the things that we may need for, that are actually board support, right? I think you ultimately will engage in those contracts. The second question is, are the settlements either above or below that threshold public? Are we, let me be more specific. Are we communicating how much we spend on legal fees to the public?
So you'll see under the policy that those, the total spend has to be reported on a semi-annual basis to the Board. Some of those settlements, depending on what the content of them, we can't share publicly, particularly if it comes to like settlements in IDEA cases that are student-involved, where we have to provide some kind of compensatory service to a student. Certainly, we'd be bound by some level of confidentiality in those, but others certainly could be subject to public disclosure.
And I think that makes sense to me. What, and even, are we going, is the public going to know the aggregate amount that we spent on legal fees without, if we put all of our cases together, how much do we pay on legal? Can we put that as part of the budget process? I understand the sensitivity around settlements, and don't want to expose students in particular, but I do think it, as we review what's going on, want to make sure that we're strengthening systems that maybe result in lawsuits or gaps in services for students, or whatever those things are. But I know it's not uncommon to have a lot of issues come up. So it's, how do we evaluate what we're settling without knowing what we're paying out or what our risk is? Can that, the total aggregate amount be shared yearly? Can we codify that in the budget process, or does that need to live in policy?
We, that's something that we can, we can discuss adding to the, to the language of this policy.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, did you have anything else to say, General Counsel? Because you did put your button on, was that what you were saying?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to clarify that there were actually three changes, proposed changes to the policy and not just two.
Okay, next up then.
I have one question about the free time. This question is directed to the interim superintendent. Do all schools have enough room to, for the students to play? I know that the elementary schools, most of them have gyms. A few of them, they do not have a gym.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Love. I would need our Facilities Department to do an inventory.
I just also want to add to that question right before you answer. That structured, unstructured play is outdoor unstructured play.
What if it's raining or cold?
Unless there is a prohibition due to weather conditions.
That's what I'm asking about, yeah.
Yeah, so again, we would need to do an inventory in order for me to truthfully answer that question for you. I can't truthfully answer it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Next question is related to employee conflict of interest. How did this come about? Were doing a policy revision, or laws changed, or, tell me more.
This, this policy change is not a requirement from the state law, so it's not a statutory policy change. Again, that policy is on Page 28. It's just clarifying some of the scope of the policy as far as who it, who it actually applies to, rather than including persons such as vendors and suppliers. It would be more specifically addressing employees of the district to better align with the district policies around personnel.
Yeah, the next question is the final question. If the Board approves this when it's approval time, can the district send that out and to all employees and make them acknowledge it? Let's just say, the district sends out the student parent books, and you sign it to make the parents aware of it and the system aware of it that you read it. Can the district do that?
I'd like to defer to the superintendent to answer the specific question around sending out the policy for attestation for employees.
Yes, Board Member Love, again, thank you for that question. I think we have a number of policies that I'd like to see people sign off on because over the past decade or so, I'm not sure if people are really going in and reading and evaluating and assessing and understanding policy and implementing it with the level of fidelity that we need to. So I welcome doing something around some of these policies that we know are important as we try to restore transparency and trust in our school district. So thank you for that question.
That's all.
Board Member Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First question.
Um, first question, um, when given the 40 minutes to, I'm, I'm referring back to policy number 3007. When given recess to the children, you said 40 minutes a day, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Would that be broken up in two halves, 20 in the morning, 20 in the afternoon?
The law does not provide stipulations on how it's implemented. They will be left up to the purview of the district as to how that actually is implemented per day.
The next question. Um, when, when it is inclement weather, will they still have that recess, uh, recess inside the building? Or find something for them to do during that time?
Um, I wanted to defer back to the superintendent around his, um, answer for facilities question.
Yes, um, again, thank you. And anytime legislators are writing statute or policy, it's written extremely broad. With them not being practitioners, the devil is always in the details of the implementation. We're trying to not micromanage schools. We're trying to, as much as teachers reach out and say, allow us to teach, allow us to manage our own classrooms. We're not micromanaging how this is being implemented. We're just asking that students receive 40 minutes of unstructured physical education time. If a teacher wants to split it up into 20 minutes, it's fine. If they want to do four, 10 minutes periods, it's fine. If you want to do a 40-minute block of implementation, it's fine. We're just trying to follow the statute that has been set by the law where we have no option but to implement it. Uh, if it's raining, uh, we would ask, uh, that schools find a way to implement it. But if they can't go outside, they have no other choice than to not do it for that day and maybe catch up on it another day. Uh, but I don't think, I don't want to sit on the desk and say that someone is doing something that they're not. Life happens, uh, where we have no control over if it's raining or storming. Uh, and so I don't want to sit here, uh, and patronize you all around the question and say that they are doing it when they're not doing it if it's inclement weather.
Thank you, Dr. Richmond. I just wanted to go ahead and piggyback off of Commissioner Williams, uh, because he was specifying some things about, uh, the kids having more time to play. But I wanted to let him know, and I looked it up too. I wanted you to know that exercise helps children in school improving cognitive functions like focus, memory, and it also makes them improving in their, uh, studies. So when they're studying, so we give them half and half on recess. When they come back, they're ready to learn, they're more focused, their memory is still there. So it does help them cognitively.
And, and it also, you all, you heard me say a number of times, I want school to be fun and exciting for students. When students are just coming to school all day and all they're doing is prepping for a test, all they're doing is, is sitting, uh, and receiving, uh, instruction and there's no downtime for students to enjoy themselves and to just be children. Uh, school, uh, becomes a place that they really don't want to come to. And I don't want our schools to be like that for our students. I want it to be a place that they enjoy coming, uh, and while they're there, uh, they're learning.
Thank you so much. And it also improves academic performance. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have a, a couple of questions as we, does anyone have any more questions as we wrap this policy committee up? Okay.
I, I firmly believe that extra, extra activities and those things help and stretch the imagination and the mind. But they're getting a whole lot of that at home and they're getting a whole lot of that everywhere. But at school, school is not a place to come and play. It is a place to come and learn and grow and to, to increase your cognitive skills, not your athleticism and all of those things. It does contribute to that. But my point is I would never take away from instruction to play ball. Because you have to teach, you're still going to be measured by what you teach. They're not going to measure them by how well they can jump and how high they can run. They're not, that's not measurable and they're not going to even consider that. And I am told from reading in the Nashville Daily that there are certain schools in East Tennessee who will not enforce this. They are fighting it, they're challenging it as a matter of fact, because they, their kids get structured play, structured tab at the house. So if we are to promote the culture and to, to increase the learning and, and all of the cognitive levels, we don't have time to play.
Thank you, Board Member Williams. A couple of comments on a couple of these that, um, I have a, um, question about the request for the suspensions. Are you all asking to suspend the entire policies or the, or certain sections of them, particularly around the annual operating budget? So are we more suspending dates or suspending the actual whole policy?
So at this time, we're requesting suspension of the entire policies until January the 27th of next year. Um, this is to give, um, for the first policy to give staff ample opportunity and for this annual operating, but annual operating budget in particular, to give board, uh, the board itself time to, um, approve those, um, district priorities that need to be in place for the budget process.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The, the other observation that I have, I appreciate everyone's comments about, um, policy 3007. Um, I think, uh, Board Member Williams brought up a good, a good point. What this appears to be is, and, and Dr. Richmond, this appears to be that noneducators made decisions about what we need to, to do, um, as it, as it pertains to, um, teaching and learning. And I do agree recess is, is something that is needed. Um, but I think, Dr. Richmond, if we set up some of those metrics, as you, you proposed after some of the questions that Dr., uh, that, um, Board Member Williams said, if we set those up for ourselves to determine whether those are actually having the impact that we, we need as part of our data dashboard or something to that effect, I would highly recommend we do that to see how effective it is. Because the other piece we talked about is the fiscal impact, the budgetary impact, that we may need to do, it may work and we may need to do some more things around auditoriums, gyms, that sort of thing in terms of, of, um, our facilities. So I just want us to, I want us to think about that broadly and think about how we measure these. Um, because I feel like too, this is going to result in a potentially unfunded mandate. And so that's the other piece that we want to be able to, to, to talk about. So I have, um, Chair Love.
Stephanie Love, yeah. Um, this question is related to the student conduct, um, I forgot, um, um, there are infractions that causes a student to be suspended, ISS. What is the district going to do to remedy those experience? Um, I know a student, several students that get suspended every year for the same thing. And, um, suspensions are not always a cure. What is the district going to do, behavior specialists, um, counselors and parents and community, all of them working together to remedy those behaviors that the student exhibits time after time?
Uh, thank you for that question, Board Member Love.
This question is for, uh, Dr. Richmond.
Thank you. I was going to defer.
Thank, thank you, Board Member Love. Again, this is, it's a, it's a great question. The team and I spent several hours last week on Monday and Tuesday during our comstat report outs. And on those days, specifically Mr. Bates, uh, Ms. Davis, uh, as well as Dr. Broadway, uh, we spent time talking about our multi-tiered system of support, uh, the ecosystem. I don't know if the board is aware, but we've put in place this year, uh, we've asked that no principal suspend a student over four days without, uh, having permission from, uh, his or her supervisor, uh, because we want to ensure that students are not receiving, uh, exclusionary, uh, disciplinary measures in excess. Uh, we also spent a lot of time talking about any student who has cumulative been suspended over five days should have a behavior intervention plan in place. We also met yesterday, I met with Mr. Bates and the team to start talking about how we incentivize schools around, uh, attendance, uh, days of peace, uh, behavioral infractions going down. Uh, and, and speaking with, again, all of the individuals who make up the ecosystem and all of them should have a scorecard related to the schools that they support. So if I'm a attendance liaison, my responsibility is to drive down chronic absenteeism to increase attendance. If I'm a behavior specialist, my role is to drive down exclusionary practices, suspensions of students being put out of school. All, every person that's part of that ecosystem should have their own individual scorecard related to the schools that they are supporting so that we can help better address the needs of our students and not just use exclusionary practices, which are, uh, out of school suspensions, in-school suspensions and expulsions.
Thank you. Um, could you be so kind as, um, um, there are several schools that I go into and on the bulletin board, right when you walk in, there is fight-free days. And that, um, sends a negative connotation to people that are visiting the school.
Yes, ma'am. We, we're looking at rebranding that as days of peace.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, that's, that's one of the incentives that we're putting in place because we do want to drive down, uh, students being involved in physical altercations. We want to talk to our students about, uh, alternative means to conflict. Uh, that's one of the reasons we're rolling out seven mindsets. That's one of the reasons we're spending a lot of time on SEL. And one of the components is, uh, responsible decision-making along with, uh, relationship skills and self-management. Uh, those things are things that we're trying to, uh, reinforce with students. But again, some schools are probably using fight-free as opposed to using days of peace. But we want to track that because we want to, um, as in Maxwell, who I'm asking all of our schools to read as part of our books, book study. Every day we should be able to keep the score around if we're being successful. Every day we should be talking about at the end of the day, what was our attendance rate? Every day at the end of the school day, we should be talking about, did we have any referrals to the office? Every day we should be talking about if it was a day of peace and no conflict. Every day we should be talking about how students did academically. Those are ways of us keeping score and keeping the main thing, the main thing when it comes to creating the type of climate and culture within our schools that we want to be proud of.
All right, um, Board Member Hewitt Garcia and then Board Member Murphy, and then we're going to adjourn the policy committee meeting.
I think all the questions have been good, um, related to the student wellness policy. But I want to, um, I heard what the superintendent said about not micromanaging implementation. I agree this is unfunded, but is it accurate to say we do not have any consequences for not delivering this built in with the policy? That this is a recommendation, but there is no, there isn't a punishment to teachers because we believe the autonomy to implement that in a way that they see fit. There's no consequence to employees for not executing this based on the policy. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's accurate.
Okay, I think that's what, what we're all set, saying. But I do think, uh, to Board Member Love's question, can schools accommodate? I currently have schools that do PE in the, in the hallway because every classroom is overflowing. Um, they've been on a list for over a decade to get a gymnasium. So if this is something the state wants, I think we do need to put together a comprehensive list of schools that need gymnasiums, uh, because I think that's, if you want us to enforce the law, you have to have the space. And that's a, this is, this is a great request of that. Um, so maybe our legislative agenda, excuse me, legislative agenda should include implementations report. Thank you.
Superintendent, if I may, there may not be a consequence to the individual, but if you can recall, each year we, as a school district, we're responsible for submitting to the state, um, something that's called an LEA compliance report. And it's generally due, um, at the end of November. In that LEA compliance report, they're looking for, um, our compliance with different, all of the different laws that apply to us, all of the different state rules. So if we know that we're not in compliance with, um, this particular provision, that could be something that we could be cited for and would have to have an action plan moving forward, um, when we submit our information to the state.
Give us more money, that's the action plan? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this question is for Dr. Richmond. Uh, what would a district do when our children are suspended and they are out of class for the four days? Are they or will they be allowed to make up their work, their schoolwork and tests?
Yes, that's in policy. The students have an opportunity to make up any missed work, uh, due to, uh, suspension.
One more question, then I'm done. Um, I think you, I heard you say they, the amount of time they're supposed to be suspended is four days, correct? Uh, some of the suspensions were supposed to be four days because I know that some, some students are being suspended for 30 days, 40 days. So how are we going to change that?
I said, any suspension over four days has to be reviewed by the principal's supervisor. That doesn't preclude students from being suspended over four days. What we're trying to monitor is that any student who is suspended over four days, it aligns with, uh, the code of conduct. If, if you create a zero tolerance offense, you're going to receive an expulsion. But we're just, speaking of just regular misbehaviors, we're trying to ensure that misbehaviors, the consequence align with, uh, the student breaking the rule. It aligns with the rule.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I know that I've, I've seen or saw, um, some children get expense, have a 40-day suspension for just a fight, which could have been just a three-day suspension, but it was a 40-day suspension, 39 days, 38. So we need to really push that.
Well, it, it depends on the severity of the fight. Uh, again, these things are being reviewed by the principal supervisor as well as our hearing officials, uh, and Mr. Bates, who was the director, uh, of, of behavior and discipline.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, are there any other questions? Just want to remind all board members that if you, um, have any more questions, please submit them to, um, the policy office. Is that right, G C Bailey, to the policy office directly?
That's correct.
Okay, and remember, are you all asking to suspend any, um, to suspend rules to, for us to approve this in one reading for any of these?
No, ma'am, it can go through the regular cycle unless, uh, the general counsel has an.
All right, so we basically have two months, you all, to take a look at this and deep dive. So, um, no further business for the policy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I received a clarification. The two suspensions, we do want them to move forward expeditiously.
Okay, so you want us, you want us to suspend the rules to approve this in the first reading?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So board members, that would be data dashboard and annual operating budget, which will be on the, um, agenda for Tuesday. And you're asking us to suspend the rules to adopt it on Tuesday, the 27th? All righty, all right, no further questions. This committee meeting is adjourned. Next committee is the Community Outreach and Engagement Committee meeting. That is Board Members Love and Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, any open discussions concerning the committee? Chair Love, any, any open discussions?
No.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the items. Item 2.01 is attendance and truancy report.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Richmond, Board Chair McKinney, board members. Today, I am Stacy Davis. My senior leader is Dr. Shontae Broadway. Will be presenting on attendance and truancy. Next slide. The purpose of the district's attendance framework is to implement a comprehensive three-tier model that promotes positive attendance habits, identifies and addresses emerging attendance concerns and delivers targeted interventions for students experiencing chronic absenteeism or significant behavior challenges. Next slide, please. The next slide represents the district's scorecard for attendance and truancy. As Dr. Richmond pointed out, last week, we shared this information with senior leaders and others across the district during the comstat report. As you can see, we have, um, our key metrics, which by the end of the 2025 As you can see, we have, um, our key metrics, which by the end of the 2025-26 school year, we're going to increase attendance, our attendance rate by 2% by the end of, and we're on track to do that, uh, our baseline data, our end of year data as it pertains, uh, to the goal, and then where we currently are. By the end of 25-26 school year, our goal is to reduce our chronic absenteeism by 5%. And again, it represents where we landed last year, what the goal is for this year, and where we currently stand. 8.2.3, by the end of the 25-26 school year, we're going to increase parent participation by 5% of identified families who attend the attendance meetings. Uh, last year, uh, and I'll get more into that later in the, the presentation, but our baseline data was 88.8. Our goal is 94%. Uh, we're 0% now because our first attendance meeting is upcoming for the year. And lastly, by the end of the 25-26 school year, our goal is to reduce the overall truancy rate by 2%. As you can see where our baseline data is, what our goal is, and where we currently stand. So we're on track, um, as to what the data is, um, being presented today. And I do have to give a shout out to Mr. Bill White, Dr. Eric Cosman, and that entire team for being able to provide us with good data. Next slide, please. In August, we launched the Show Up For Greatness Attendance Initiative. This initiative has changed in the way that it is a three-tier model, but in previous years, the focus was on those students who were coming to school every day, in which we want to continue to focus on those students, but there was very little support for the tier two and especially the tier three. So with the greatness, with the Show Up For Greatness Attendance Initiative, it is a district-wide initiative. It is designed to build a cultural, culture of consistent attendance through the tiered levels of intervention and positive recognition for our students. So as you can see with tier one, tier two, and tier three, those levels are referred to as gold, silver, and bronze. You see the banners that are on each side of the board platform. Uh, the district, we are strengthening our collaboration among our attendance and truancy liaisons as well as our family liaisons, the RTIB specialists, to create that ecosystem that Dr. Richmond referred to earlier by using data-driven information to accelerate progress in reducing chronic absenteeism and truancy. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot, Superintendent Richmond, board members, of what our attendance rate, again, the baseline information, the actual information as it, uh, is identified in Power BI, our chronic absenteeism rate, uh, baseline information, where we are currently, and again, our truancy. And underneath there is, uh, again, just the district's scorecard on where we should be by the end of this school year.
Let me annotate right here that this particular slide, uh, like much of these data, were pulled on October 3rd. Uh, so we do want you all to know that this is lag data. Whenever you're looking at, uh, enrollment and attendance data, uh, it's fluid, it changes all the time, but as of October 3rd, these are the data for October 3rd, closing out the first quarter. So I want to just give, annotate that fact around the data.
Good evening, uh, Board Member Superintendent Richmond. I also just wanted to add, as we're looking at these data, that you'll see that high risk of chronic absenteeism. That's what we call our internal estimates related to chronic absenteeism. And what that means is that 31.5, for example, and of course, the 24.2, but the 31.5 is our estimate for 24-25. The final state data for 24-25, um, remain embargoed, and so we're not really able to share those in a public forum yet. They will eventually be finalized and allowed for us to share. So I just didn't want any confusion with that aspect either. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Next slide, please. Here Superintendent Richmond, board members, this is, this slide represents our absentee rate by grade level. As you can see, I have the grades nine through 12 highlighted because those are the grades with the highest rate, uh, of absentee and followed by kindergarten, uh, with a 6.4%. So the absentee rate sharply increases starting at ninth grade. Grade 10 has the highest rate at 9.2, and all of the high school grades are higher than elementary and middle school. And again, this data reflects the first and second, uh, reporting periods. Next slide, please. This data is, and let me go back to the previous slide. This information captures, um, all schools, including charter. Next slide. This information captures, uh, the absentee rate by regions. And as you can see, CSI, uh, has the highest number of, when it comes to the absentee rate by grade level, uh, followed by northeast, northwest, southeast, and then rounding out Next slide, please. Um, we don't have it. The board members don't have it. We don't have it. My apologies. This particular slide represents, uh, those students within our special population, the homeless, our homeless students. And again, I want to highlight or call out those grades nine through 12. They represent, uh, the highest levels of, uh, the lowest level, excuse me, here on this particular slide with the abs, with the attendance rate, as well as our English learners in grades nine through 12. They represent, uh, having the lowest attendance rate in those, in those areas. Next slide, please. Our high risk of chronic absenteeism rate, as you can see, again, grades nine through 12 represent those grade levels with the highest risk of chronic absenteeism. That is then followed by our kindergarten students with 25.7% high risk of chronic absenteeism. Next slide. Our truancy rate, again, highlighting grades nine through 12, those grade levels have the highest, uh, truancy rate among all other grade level, followed by eighth grade with a 12.7, and then our kindergarten students coming in at 12.1 for our truancy rate. Next slide, please. This slide represents the Greatness At Your Door strategy. I want to highlight that when we started this particular strategy this summer, we identified those students who were chronically absent at the end of last school year who had not registered for this school year. What we did, we asked the GOS at the school, they're 12 months now, the attendance liaisons before they left for the summer, they started making phone calls. So we identified all of the students who were chronically absent, started making those phone calls. As a result of those phone calls, 808, 1,889 students were identified. By the end of the first reporting period, 1,042 students had registered. So I do want to highlight that we started with, uh, zip codes 38127. You can see the number there with their average attendance rate last year and what they currently are as of, uh, October 3rd. Then we moved to the 38109 zip code, 489 students identified, the average attendance rate, 84.5. And then 38114 is who we identified, uh, after pulling the withdrawal list. So I don't want to say that all of our efforts, these students enrolled or registered as a result of us knocking on every door, but we left these door hangers on each door that we, um, identified, and parents would then start to call us and, and ask the questions about somebody was here, somebody left a, a door hanger on my door. So this is, this is really good information. Number one is data that we can track, and we have real-time information on what number of students that we identified, how many again, registered, and then the number that we're looking at now, uh, that we're still continuing to work on. What is not here is the last, uh, zip code that we targeted right before fall break, which was 38111, and we're still waiting on to pull that information, and we'll have it to you in the next report.
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Davis. It may be good for context, before you get to it, to tell them where 38114, 38109, and 38127, where those zip codes, just a few schools.
Thank you. 38114 was the Melrose and Sharp District. 38109, we targeted, uh, American Way. We did River View in the 38109. It's, it's kind of widespread, but the River View, uh, District, the, uh, Whitehaven District included 38109. 38127 was the Tresva High School area, uh, Tresva High School, and I want to say Grandview was the other one.
And, and 38114 is also like the, the Ball Road, uh, Hamilton, would there be Hamilton, South Memphis, Ball Road, Ball Road, Ball Road area.
And then, again, the 38111 is, we targeted Kingsbury High School, Berclair, that surrounding Next slide, please. This slide represents those agencies, those external agencies that we are collaborating with. This is not an exhaustive list, but these are those agencies that have either reached out to us or we've reached out to for support that centers around attendance and truancy. Uh, Memphis Grizzlies, I want to call them out. They were out this morning recognizing our teachers who are doing some phenomenal work in terms of making sure that, because it starts with our teachers taking accurate attendance every day. So they visited four schools this morning, downtown elementary, medical district, Kirby High School, and Ridgeway High School to recognize, uh, teachers who are, are showing up for greatness and capturing attendance, accurate attendance for our students. Next slide. What's next? And I know the writing is kind of small, but in terms of truancy, we have hired a new truancy manager. The new truancy manager is Mr. Kelly Henderson. He will lead that work. So we are looking to realign the truancy roles under a centralized structure to give more accountability and use data, uh, to drive and support the work through the truancy office. We want to expand student and school recognition programs. Dr. Richmond has spoken many times about spotlighting our students, spotlighting our schools, spotlighting our principals. We want this, we want to, to inclu, include more social media highlights, uh, and recognizing students and staff through local media features. We want to enhance collaboration with our community partners, uh, and making sure that our Be Present, Be Great, uh, strategy, which is our tier three, that the families are receiving those much-needed supports during the meetings, and that we create, uh, parent academies with our face office and other community partners, providing those full wraparound services such as transportation and, and health services and counseling into each session. We also want to increase visibility through school and community campaigns. We want to relaunch our Show Up For Greatness. We presented this again in August, but we want to brand it at every school, making sure the schools have the, the banners, especially those CSI schools, so that we can build some positive momentum and unified messaging across all five regions. And finally, we want to use Power School and Power BI dashboards to identify school needs with intensive support, tracking our intervention outcomes, and spotlighting bright spot schools, again, where they are modeling, uh, what we can hopefully put across, throughout the district. I do want to go back to a slide, to the slide, Greatness At Your Door slide. What you don't see in the data, Superintendent Richmond, board members, is, next slide, I think it is, a couple of slides over. What you don't see in the data, we, we're recognizing our students who, again, every student is not, does not have 95, 96% attendance rate. But those students who we identified that had challenges last year, but they're showing improvement, those are students who we really want to spotlight as well. This, this young man, this was from, I think, a couple of weeks ago at Lucy E. Campbell, and I have to give a shout out to Principal G and tell the story. We reached out to him, emailed him and said to him, we want to recognize these students for the improvement in the attendance that they've made. Principal G made it an entire program. He had the entire school there. He invited the parents, he put the students and the parents on stage, and that positive recognition made those students, including this young man, so proud of what they've been doing. And our communication or our conversation with the students were, we want you to come to school every day. Be sure to tell your mom that you, you want to come to school every day. So we can acknowledge not just, again, our students that are in the 95 percentile, but those that are, are really trying, and then lend that support to those, uh, who, who may have, it may seem like they've given up, but that's what our, our outreach has been about, making those phone calls, making those connections. And again, some of that is not in the data, but it's just a testament of what we're trying to, um, to put in place with the work that we're doing. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, I do have questions on the floor. I will start with, uh, Commissioner Hewitt and then Commissioner Love.
Before we start, I just want to recognize that Board Member Porter is here. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. My, my question is around attendance and truancy, uh, rates for special populations. Typically, 18 days wouldn't worry me in a lag, uh, but particularly for English language learners, English learners, right, grade level, since this data has been verified, we've had the National Guard arrive in Memphis. Do we have any unofficial data about whether attendance rates have dramatically decreased since that arrival? Good question.
Thank you for the question. Based on the data that I've been able to pull in collaboration with, um, the REES office, we've not seen a significant difference in the attendance since the National Guard arrived. I know that we've had some conversations with, uh, Director Richardson, and I think I see her in the back. We've tried to increase our communication to families, our EL families about, around the importance of daily attendance. I know that Doc, the Chief Richardson or Director Richardson, they have parent meetings that my office also attends, but there's been no correlation between increased attendance since the National Guard arrived. since the National Guard arrived.
Okay. Anecdotally, that teachers have said that they have students who are not showing up. So could we get the official report when that is available, maybe in the next meeting? What do we, do we have any safeguards in place for students or families who communicate concerns about ICE being present in our city? Is there anything that we can do to support them?
Currently, we don't have anything other than encouraging them to come to school. No one has told us that ICE has been on any of our campuses. So with ICE not being on our campus and with there not being an immigration issue at this time, at this time, we haven't.
I think the concern is not necessarily on school campuses, is that transit outside of school zones. I didn't know if there's been any concerns or if there is anything that we can do or replicate. I've seen in other districts, there are like parent volunteers who are watching, like, who are along the walking routes. Is there anything we have considered if we do start getting those sorts of concerns?
It's my understanding that many of those things that are in place are happening with grassroots agencies and not necessarily being coordinated through school districts.
Okay. I would be very interested to see our official rate because I am hearing different things from teachers about attendance rates, so.
Yes, ma'am. The question you asked Board Member Garcia is an excellent question. So I will give, that's why I started off giving the caveat that this data is from the first quarter, which is the data that we analyzed. That quarter ended, I want to say October 3rd, it ended. The National Guard came in on October 10th. So we will look at those data post-October 10th.
Commissioner Love?
Excellent presentation, Stacy. But I didn't see where you got the district numbers of how many kids we have in school.
I just pulled our enrollment numbers and as of yesterday, all schools, including charter, all students, one hundred seven thousand three hundred and twenty. That includes charter school, all students. Non-charter, eighty-six thousand seven hundred, I'm sorry, eighty-seven thousand seventy-five. That's non-charter. And that's slightly up from prior to fall break, but we typically see just a slight increase after fall break with our students coming in. So non-charter, eighty-seven thousand seventy-five.
Yeah. Another question. How many of those students are truant year after year?
That's a great question, Commissioner Love, and I don't have that data in front of me, but my colleague, Mr. Bates, taking notes, I'll definitely provide that information to you.
And the final question, the kindergartners, that is six point four. The kindergartners don't get themselves dressed for school. The parents have to get them, get them dressed. And how many of those are bus riders or walkers? Do it for the elementary schools? I have principals tell me if it is cold and raining, the students, they don't come to school.
And that is correct. And thankfully, this year, we have not experienced any really severe weather, you know, it's probably forthcoming, I'm not going to speak it. And then we haven't had issues of major lockdowns or anything like that. So when those things happen and we pull the attendance the very next day or the following week, we do see those declines in attendance. And what we're saying too constantly, and that's the good thing about the schools working with the attendance liaisons, because again, attendance liaisons now support all schools across the district. You're not just assigned to one school with two hundred and fifty students. You support three, in some cases, four, with a thousand students. But they're working collaboratively to make those phone calls. And I can say it's really been beneficial when you make those direct phone calls to families. Now, not all of them answer, not all the numbers are good, but when we are able to connect with the parents to find out the why, that's the other thing. A lot of the coding is incorrect. So that gives us an opportunity to go in and correct those attendance codes. You asked a question a couple of weeks ago about how can I be tardy and then be counted absent for the full day? Well, if I'm, school starts at seven thirty, I come in at eight o'clock, I'm tardy. I'm not absent. So those are some of the things too that the liaisons are addressing and correcting to improve our data.
I said, three tardies equal an absent.
Right. So if I'm tardy on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, that does not equate to an absence.
Tardy means you're late.
Tardy, you're correct.
Absent means you don't come to school.
Absolutely, absolutely. But the key thing is, it starts with the teachers taking attendance. First ten minutes, five minutes of the period. And that will reduce a lot of, then obviously, the attendance liaisons are reconciling the attendance by the end of the day, but that helps us when the attendance is right on the front end, going into Power School, the information we're pulling from Power BI, then Mr. White's office, they're addressing that data because it's going to the state and that's obviously how we are funded. So it goes hand in hand. I love the collaboration again with Mr. White in his office with Dr. Rosalind Stevenson and the FACE team, as well as Dr. Luster with Student Experiences.
And the final question is how many service interventionists work with the parents, not just with the students, work with the parents?
That's a great question.
Yeah.
I'll get back to you.
You don't know?
I'm sorry, you said how many?
How many of these work with the parents?
Those that are on the right-hand side mostly work with parents. These are agencies also through juvenile court. That's the other thing. We have a really great presence at juvenile court, and you've been involved in that work for many years. Now we have onsite support, our attendance, district attendance advisors, they're in court on Wednesdays. But these agencies work through juvenile court, which we connect with them.
Let me give you a little bit of advice. I have been to juvenile court more times than I can remember. The judges, if the student is in school, the judges just dismiss the case. I have seen students be absent for a year or two. The judges just dismiss the case if those students are registered in school. They don't do follow-up and they don't hold the parents accountable for educational neglect. There is a law. All students have to be in school. We're, we get the bad end of that. We are not juvenile court. We are the Shelby County School System, and we send those parents to juvenile court to make juvenile court assist us. If a student don't come to school, we're penalized by the money and the academics. I would be very interested to know how many of these services work with the parents, work with the parents. The students do exactly what the parents say. They don't, the parents don't force them to come to school, they are not going to come. And we can't be spending our money on services that don't work with the root cause. That's all.
Thank you.
If I may interject real quick.
Sure.
Thank you. One, I want to acknowledge Board Member McKissick, just to make sure everybody knows you're here. And, yeah, so, wait a minute, wait a minute, we got a surprise, we got a surprise. Anyway, just FYI, I appreciate the board accommodating, doing the board meetings right before board work session. We have a few more things for our board committee meetings. I am going to recommend that we put those things on the heel of our board work session meeting so that we get through everything, and we would have completed our board meeting work and so that we have a smooth board meeting next week, so you can get all your questions out on everything. And so I just wanted to let you know that that's something that I'm going to ask that we add to the agenda for board work session. So keep asking your questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Love. Commissioner Ote?
Thank you, Board Member McKinnney. My questions were answered, actually, Board Member Garcia asked those questions regarding absenteeism, but I did, there was one other part to that. I just want to know the correlation between absenteeism and the grade bands. Do we have that information? Or we can get it, if you can get it.
We can provide that information to you.
Yeah, we can provide, that's an excellent question. But I will also say that traditionally, if you see kindergarten and first grade, parents are still babying their children. So if I wake up and I have a tummy ache, if I have a headache, a parent is going to be more inclined to allow their kindergarten and first grade. If you go back and look at any of the data around kindergarten, first grade, and ninth grade, normally that's where your spikes are in regards to absenteeism and chronic absenteeism. Mainly in kindergarten and first grade is because students are young, parents still have a close attachment to them. Ninth grade is why most school districts have a ninth grade academy to transition those students, because that's when you start to see a lot of students experience truancy and delinquency in the ninth grade. So that's just kind of anecdotally.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and observations. I looked at the, I don't know what slide number this is, attendance and truancy, where you say key policies that guide our work. One of the things I would like to ask you to consider looking at is the correlation between student, is there any correlation between student conduct and attendance and truancy? Particularly since I want to acknowledge that in the policy, the student conduct policy and administration rules and regs, that you all are now going to do that behavioral report so that, with a behavior plan. So is there any way that we can sort of?
We've done that. We've looked at the correlation, and we really believe that our chronic out-of-school rate, what has helped it tremendously, and you all will be able to see it when you look at our students with disabilities, is that we've cut the number of students being suspended. So we looked at that data last week, and there is a correlation.
So I would appreciate if we include that in these kind of reports. That would be great for all of us to see, because that will also help determine how well your behavior, the behavioral plan is working. Yeah. The other question I have is around on page with your partners, your strategic partners. And I do remember we talked about having a dashboard for our strategic partners to make sure, I think Board Member Love said a great thing, we keep spending money on things, but it's not actually working. So we need to make sure that we are doing the same thing for our strategic partners to make sure that we're getting the return on investment for what we actually need.
Yes, I want to say that Mr. White's office and the team, specifically with contracts that we have, we're capturing that data. Now, we'll have to look at those strategic partners to see if we have contracts with all of them. For example, Grizzlies, I don't think we have a contract with them, but we could look at how they're supporting us. So everyone that's on that list is not supporting us contractually. Some of them are just supporting us as community agencies.
I still think we should do that if we can, because again, maybe that's something that we can, I don't know, continue that partnership, expand that partnership, but just make sure that we're looking at how well it's impacting.
Yes, ma'am.
The next question that I have is similar to Board Member Hewitt Garcia around the impact of ICE on our families and children. I would love, you hear me say this all the time, freeing our mind about thinking about how we can be supportive. And one of the things that I would like for us to consider is how we could be creative about transportation. Because what I'm getting from the constituency that I support is that parents are afraid to leave their homes and therefore not taking their children to school. So that's the reality of the situation. I know there are some efforts, grassroots efforts, where there are people who are volunteering to pick up children and carpool them, but I don't know how sustainable that is. So can we just think about some possibilities in working with our Hispanic community and coming up with some ideas on how we can be supportive and still comply with the law?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Williams? Turn your mic on, sir.
In this school district where parents could not keep kids, the parent was punished if the child didn't come to school. There was a woman by the name, and everybody would know her. She worked for the Housing Authority. But if your child did not come to school, you lost your benefits. And it was easy to do, and her name was Cornelia Crenshaw. She and Sarah Lewis would roam these streets, and if you were not coming to school, parents were punished, and you would lose benefits, you could lose your housing, a plethora of things. So you just can't say that students, we did with who come, but those who are not coming are the ones creating the havoc, the problems, losing money on them, and the parents are condoning it. So if you are a parent and your child can stay at home because they want to, then you are an unfit parent. You have to bring the children to school, they have to come to school. And if they don't come, you should not be entitled to a life of luxury and public money that you are not using properly. And that's what it used to be. You just couldn't, you could just not stay at home. And where there was absent, it was documented, and you could lose everything you had, it glued where you were living. So there are no free rides around here. These folks who got kids standing at home, it is not by choice, it is their choice. They are allowing it. And therein, the judge would say you are an unfit parent. You don't allow children not to come to school, that is an obligation to this society to transmit the proper culture. Because if you don't come, you're going to be, you will not be able to handle this culture. So there is a responsibility for parents as well. And we know who come to school and who does not come to school, and we know who allows it. And as a teacher, you will see it clearly every day. If mama didn't want you to go and you didn't have, you don't have to go, but you must go. And that's been the fight forever. And we cannot condone parents who allow their children to stay at home and live off of the government and everybody else, but do not require them to get an education.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. I just have two quick questions. The first one is, we once had truancy officers in the district. Do we still have those?
Thank you, Vice Chair Coleman. We do not have truancy officers, the ones that existed back in the day, I've been around a long time. We have eight truancy liaisons that work in collaboration with the attendance liaisons, but no, we do not have the truancy officers.
So if I see a child walking the streets or in the park, what do we as concerned citizens do to report that these children are?
We do have a hotline that citizens can call to indicate that they see a group of students that should be in school. But again, two, to add to that, some of our students are homeschool, some of our students attend virtual school, and I think there were some issues before that, you know, we would, or not we, but law enforcement would see a group of students, assume that they belonged to the district, but in fact, they were homeschool students. So right now, we just have the hotline, and if they were to pick them up, you know, obviously during So, um, right now we just have the hotline, and if we, they were to pick them up, you know, obviously during school hours, we would take them to school. But again, they may not be enrolled in our district.
Okay, my other quick question is that students, that when you did the door knock, did we ask the question, what stopped you? Or why, why did you drop? Or why are you not in school now?
Absolutely. We, we had the data at our fingertips, uh, and then too, we used our phone to be able to pull up those students. And there were various reasons why. Uh, early on in the school year, it was my child was suspended at the end of the year. I don't know what school he needs to enroll in. That was just one question. The other question was, my child hasn't been in school in a couple of years. I don't know what grade. Uh, he, he should be in the ninth grade, but the last grade he completed was sixth grade. So it was those types of questions that we were able to, we had a team, people that you see in this room out, uh, supporting our efforts. Uh, now the young man sitting in front of me, he, you know, he couldn't keep up with us, but that's okay. But yes, they had lots of questions for us, and we were able to either provide services on the spot or refer, call our colleague, uh, Dr. Stevenson. If there were issues of uniforms, we could call the homeless office if that was the case and be able to connect them with those services immediately. There, there were so many. The last one that we did, maybe not the last one, but the one before is Sharp Elementary. We walked into the school, we took a break, um, and we walked into the school, the front office staff told us that there were two parents that had been there the week before with their kindergarten students, but they had not returned. That we were approaching the kindergarten cutoff, and they said they live in an apartment complex. We go, went over to the apartment complex, and sure enough, one of the families, uh, was there. And she said the reason she had not returned was because of shock. Her, her child did not have updated, uh, immunization. So we were able to connect with Carmisha Johnson in that department and just get those services right then, and they are scheduled and, and provided for them. So that, a lot of different questions throughout our visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Love.
I want to piggyback off of Keye Williams' comments. Um, not all parents are on state assistance. And not all parents are purposely keeping their children from school. Uh, homeless, uh, work. I got a call, um, two years ago, and the parent was keeping their child from school. The husband wouldn't beat on the child, on the parent, as long as kids were in the house. You're absolutely correct. Kids need to be in school every day, but I don't want the narrative to be not all parents keep their kids at home because they are unfit.
Thank you, Commissioner Love. I would like to thank Dr. Luster and Ms. Roslin because they have been working diligently with me with families that are homeless, that need uniforms. And they have been working, um, all around the clock with me. So everything that I send them, they have been taking care of it. So I want to say thank you, and I appreciate you for all the help that you have given me with our homeless families. So thank you so much. Are there any other questions at this time? If there are no more questions, we'll move on. Two point zero two, community listening and session update.
Good evening or good afternoon, everyone. So I'm just going to give an update on the, um, MSCS Board Community Listening Sessions. Next slide. And so the board has hosted, uh, they hosted their first community listening session, uh, on September 3rd at the MSCS East Regional Office. And so this, uh, listening session was held in partnership with the Equity Alliance, Memphis for All, and Stand for Children. And so the purpose of these listening sessions was to bridge the gap between families, the district, raise awareness around the state takeover, and gather community input. And so some of the highlights from the listening session is we had a presentation, uh, by interim superintendent, Dr. Roderick Richmond, uh, who provided historical context around the state takeover. Also, community partners discussed longstanding challenges faced by MSCS. Uh, the meeting also concluded with questions and comments and concerns from the community. And we had over seventy-five attendees as well as twenty-one questions raised or submitted. And so, uh, session two, uh, will be held on tomorrow, Wednesday, October 22nd, at the North Fraser Community Center located at 2555 St. Elmo Avenue, uh, Memphis, Tennessee 38127. The time is from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. And so, uh, the purpose of this session is to continue to provide an open platform for families and the community members to share their voices, express concerns, and collaborate with the district to shape, uh, with, uh, a path forward for Memphis Shelby County Schools. And so our upcoming sessions, we have a virtual session scheduled for November 6th. Uh, the link will be shared soon. Uh, we have a session on November 12th, which will be held at Geizman Community Center from 5:00 to 7:30, as well as Whitehaven Community Center, December 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:30. And I think at the back of your packet, you have the questions or the comments, um, that were raised during the, uh, the first session held in September. And so those questions will be answered on tomorrow. Any comments or concerns?
Commissioner Love.
I think you answered my question. Um, can the questions be put on the district website?
Yes, I don't see where. It's a problem. I can ask Dr. Richmond and, um, Mr. Johnson about the questions being added to the district website.
Yeah, uh, the questions and responses.
The responses.
Because number four, I get that asked a lot, and, uh, the name just changed. We still have some technical classrooms and standalone centers in our district. The name just changed. Looking forward to tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner Love. Commissioner Hewitt.
Yeah, what was the criteria for community partners? And if we want to expand that, how do, how does an organization show interest in co-branding something with the district since we will not be leading these? How is that decided? What criteria do we use? So anybody who wants to be a community partner can just, who should they send the logo to? Is that what we're saying? I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny. I'm, like, is there a process?
There, currently there isn't a process. If we'd like to entertain one, um, then we should have that discussion. But I think what it was is that we had some community partners that came, came to, came to us and said, we wanted to do, um, the community engagement, folks. We wanted to do, um, something with, um, well, actually, they invited us to, to come to a community listening session. So, um, that was the first one in, it wasn't September. No, that one's a combined one. The first one, we were invited to on their own. They did it on their own.
At Bridges.
At Bridges. And as a result of that, they began to talk to us about, can we collaborate and do these community sessions, community listening sessions? And I think we brought it to the board committee meeting early in the summer, sometime in the summer. And I think collectively, we decided we wanted to do it. So the more the merrier. If we have more community.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, I think, but I don't know that we have formally said who to connect with in order to connect with the board. And so, I, I don't know, I'm going to defer to the chair, um, and co-chair of the community engagement committee.
Communication team or partnerships office?
Was sent out, and we consulted, uh, the superintendent. And we consulted each and every one of you in a commu-, uh, community meeting. The Community Engagement Committee. And each one of you got to permission to go or choose not to. Uh, we consulted, uh, the board chair and our, uh, interim superintendent and communications.
Yeah, this explains what happened, but it still doesn't explain a criteria or process. And I do remember an email being printed erroneously saying that there was a vote in dissent from a couple of board members, but there was no vote on this. I'm thinking if I'm an organization that represents community members who have a, a variety of perspectives, I would go, how do I make sure that I am bringing my community in there? Like, I have, there's, it's not a, there's no opposition to current organizations. It's about making sure we do have equity of who has access to a hundred and ten thousand students and families, which is a, a huge listening public to get input on what, what they do, and that we have transparency about how we select.
If I might, um, interject.
I thought I cleared that up. There was a misquote. The board didn't take a vote on it. We discussed it in committee.
Yeah, no, I'm, I recall.
Get with the chair.
I think I, I would just recommend that we set criteria when, when we have partnerships that are, are public. If this should be going through a communications team or a partnerships team. I know we've talked about a partnerships plan or office. I, I think if we're going to be hosting this as co-branded with organizations, any, we have a, one of the largest nonprofit communities in the country, there, we could be reaching more families. So having a criteria or a process for somebody to be considered to reach our families should be considered. That's it.
Is valid. Um, I would suggest you get with the chair and the superintendent, and we can bring something to the board.
Yes, I think that's a great idea because I think one of the things that we're finding in, um, that we found in the two sessions is that this is what community would like for us to be more intentional, uh, more often and responsive. So I think this might even be something that we want to think about baking into our DNA, that this is a policy, that we said, this is how we do community engagement. So I think, uh, one of the things we could do, as we sit here and talk about this, is we could think about a resolution that we develop a policy, and here are the things that we, we want to see. Yeah, so, um, I'll be more than happy to work with you on doing that resolution so we can get the policy down.
Thank you.
That's, uh, thank you for that question.
I, I just want to thank you, Chair. Um, point out that we have always had community listening sessions. It didn't just start with this, um, iteration of it. And, uh, it was very systematic in terms of being quarterly. And we held it where it was each district, one, two, and three, and held at different schools, uh, throughout the district. So there's always been a process, and it's for the last seven years plus now that I've served on it, that trying to reach out. So we've been, the district has been, I, I think, um, very systematic in terms of trying to admit, let the community know what's there. But partnering with more people to reach more, uh, families is always a positive thing. Thank you.
Thank you for that historical perfect, um, perspective. Um, you bring up a great point that it's, we, it's institutional. We want to make sure it remains institutional as we get different iterations. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, McKissick and Madam Chair. Um, just to reiterate what's going on here, I don't think it would be a problem with adding any, uh, other, uh, community investors to be part of this. The bigger it is, the better. And so that gives us more, a bigger spectrum to see what we want to do and how we want to move, and how we want to move the district forward. So I appreciate that. Are there any other questions? Any questions, concerns at this time? If not, then the Community Outreach and Engagement Committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Board Member McKissick, did you have something? Or did you press it? Okay, gotcha. All right, we're going next to the Procurement Committee. And that is Board Member, um, um, Vice Chair. Coleman.
Thank you. Anybody opening discussion item? We'll move right on to two point oh one, Facilities Report. Ms. Stewart.
Thank you, Vice Chair Coleman. Board superintendents. So I'll just jump right in. You know, we, um, discussed the proposed school closure names at last, uh, month's meetings. This is the preliminary impact report data. You have in front of you some Word documents. So that's a preliminary impact report for every, uh, proposed closure. Um, and it gives you the full details. There are five or six pages, what this presentation is. It's just pulled straight out of that. And it's the high level data, so we can just run through it, and you can, um, ask any questions that you may have. Um, so the first one is the consolidation of Chickasaw Middle into Westwood High School, creating a six, twelve grade structure. The rationale, rationale here is that Chickasaw, uh, and Westwood are one mile apart, and both buildings are half utilized with Chickasaw at fifty-four percent and Westwood at forty-one percent. It leaves about four hundred available seats at Westwood, uh, making it a suitable receiver. And these children are in the same, same neighborhoods, general neighborhoods. So combining the students and resources of the two schools will create more opportunities for all the students. And the new utilization at Westwood will be seventy-five percent. This is a list of the current, um, extracurricular and academic programming at Westwood High School. You can read over those for yourself, but during the community meetings, we will be asking for feedback from families and, um, any participants at the meetings to inform any additional academic or extracurricular offerings that, uh, they would like to see for their students in Westwood. Next slide, please. I'm going to pass this to Bill White to explain the academic data.
Good evening again, board members. Uh, interim superintendent Richmond. Uh, what we did in both the impact report that you have, and then subsequently in this presentation, is some of the high level, um, data for each of these schools, both the school that is proposed for consolidation and the receiving school. And, um, it's both from state and federal accountability. The most recent school letter grades, which would come from twenty-three, twenty-four, are presented. And then we've got the school performance scorecard data. You're most familiar with that when it comes to charter schools, when you've had, um, charter school applications to approve or, um, amendments to charter applications, or even a proposed closure of a charter school. That's a locally developed metric that includes a way that we look at achievement, growth, college and career data, and climate data, where they get a scale score of one to five. And then you've got the ELA and math proficiency rates, uh, from the most current TCAP. You've got the most concurrent TVOS from twenty-four, twenty-five, the overall composite, and then by the subject areas for TVOS. The chronic absenteeism rate, since we're using the official state numbers here, um, those are twenty-three, twenty-four data. Like I said earlier, the final twenty-four, twenty-five are still embargoed. And where you have a high school, we will also show the twenty-three, twenty-four graduation rate because the twenty-four, twenty-five remains embargoed for graduation rate. So you'll see that for each of these, um, uh, school consolidations, where you'll see those particular data for, um, the school of consolidation, but then the receiving building or receiving school, and you can just kind of see where, what their status looks like at this point.
This slide is the school enrollment and facilities profile of both Chickasaw and Westwood. You see the, the enrollment, uh, from twenty-one, twenty-two until the current year, twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, you see, it hasn't fluctuated a whole lot at either school. Down at the bottom left, that, that table talks to you about the year built. So you see that, uh, Chickasaw is a little bit, um, younger than Westwood. Westwood sits on more acreage and is a larger building with a larger, uh, tenure maintenance costs and higher FCI. I will speak to both of those in that we just recently, the district just put in a new roof. new roof, windows and HVAC at Westwood. And then you know we're in, creating the scope of work with XAI right now at Westwood. So those maintenance numbers and FCIs will definitely go down and the students will benefit from all those building improvements. Then the next columns are the enrollment, the capacity, and the utilization, which we spoke to earlier. This is, you might do better looking at your presentation here because I can hardly see it. But the, the overall summary you can see is the savings would be, or the cost avoidance savings would be $954,012. The personnel impact is a net of seven positions and there will be a reduction of one bus because the Chickasaw students and Westwood students are in the same neighborhood, so they would ride the bus together. This is the proposed attendance zone. The Chickasaw zone is not changing. This is the current zone and the proposed zone, and it's simply, the pink part is the Chickasaw current zone and it will just now, the kids would go to Westwood instead of Chickasaw. You see the Chickasaw school point is right there. It's really close to Westwood High School. Again, they're in the same, same neighborhood. And then the dots you see on the map, the gray dots are all the kids down there. The red dots are the kids that currently attend Chickasaw Middle. So those are the kids we're actually talking about rezoning to Westwood. We can, we're now at the Fraser Corning Elementary School into Whitney and Westside Elementary Schools Plan. The recommendation here is to consolidate Fraser Corning Elementary into Whitney and Westside Elementary Schools. The rationale is that there are five elementary schools within five square miles of each other in the Fraser community on the west side of Range Line Road. Two of those five schools are nearly full, but they're tiny little buildings. The other three of those schools are about half utilized. So in that area that I'm speaking of, we have 1,335 K through five students in those five schools with a capacity of 2,075. So those five schools together have a 61% utilization. So we've got in excess of 840 seats in those five schools. So the proposal here is to close the two smaller buildings of those five, and Fraser Corning is one of those. So Fraser Corning would be rezoned to Westside and Whitney Elementary. The students would go to the schools closest to their homes. The new utilization of Whitney would be 75% and the new utilization of Westside would be 87%. This is the list of the programming and extracurriculars at the receiving schools. And again, we'll take feedback from the community meetings to just determine new investments.
We can just pause and let you look at these data unless you want me to go through each one. But again, it's a similar layout with Fraser Corning, their data, the most current that are publicly available in those categories, same categories as earlier. And then the receiving schools, the proposed receiving schools, Whitney and Westside.
Same setup here with the enrollment data at the top for Fraser Corning in the first column and then Whitney and then Westside. You see NA in the 2122 school year for Fraser Corning and Whitney because they were in the ASD and we don't have that accurate enrollment count. Down in the bottom chart, I'll point out that Fraser Corning has the, the highest FCI, or if you recall, FCI is Facility Condition Index. The higher the number, the worse condition. So it's in the worst condition of the three on the screen. And then on the end of the utilization, you see that there's space at both Westside and Fiscal impact is $1,066,093 in savings, 11 positions, and there will be a reduction of one bus because children can ride the same, the, the routing works out that way. So we're not decreasing buses from the neighborhood. We're just simply putting more students on the buses we have. This is the zone. The green would be the proposed Westside Elementary Zone. The pink would be the proposed Whitney Elementary Zone. The dividing line there between them is Fraser Boulevard. So again, those red, the red dots represent the children that are currently at Fraser Corning, students that we're talking about rezoning. This is the Georgian Hills scenario into Whitney and Hawkins Mill. The proposal here is the same as the one I just discussed with Fraser Corning about the five elementary schools, the two very small buildings going into the three larger buildings. Georgian Hills is one of the smaller buildings, would be going into Whitney Elementary and Hawkins Mill Elementary with the utilization, proposed utilization of Whitney 75% and Hawkins Mill 72%. Just let you look at those, the current programming, remind you that we will seek input at community meetings.
And once again, you've got the same data layout as you saw before. And those are numbers that you can review and certainly let me know if you have any questions.
And the enrollment slide again, that you see here. And the bottom chart shows you that Georgian Hills, you see where it's pink highlighted, 10-year FCI is 16%, showing that that is the worst condition building of these three. And the space is available at both Hawkins Mill and, and Whitney. Fiscal impact, 910,267 savings and the personnel impact of 11 positions with a reduction of one bus. And finally, for this one, here's the attendance zone. Again, that dividing line is Fraser Boulevard with the students north of it going to Hawkins Mill Elementary and the students south of it going to the pink down to Whitney Elementary. This is Ida B. Wells Academy consolidation. The recommendation here is to consolidate Ida B. Wells. The students are all there by choice transferred now, so the students will continue to exercise their choice at any district school with available seats, or they may attend their zone schools. If there are any alternative students at Ida B. Wells Academy, they will attend Norris Achievement Academy under this proposal. The rationale here is that the, Ida B. Wells has a 10-year facility maintenance cost of $5.8 million and there are only 84 students in the school building that's as a 20th day. That's across nine grades, so Ida B. Wells is a K8. So this is a 16% utilization and that enrollment has been declining, which you'll see in a minute, over the last four years slightly. So the students will be better served in schools where there's more students and staff and programming. Since Ida B. Wells has no attendance zone, the students are attending by choice again, I mentioned that. But 18 different school attendance zones are represented in, in Ida B. Wells enrollment right now. So I'll show you the list of that in a minute. This is the school performance profile.
Yeah, I mean, obviously since this is a different situation where there's not a zone and there's not like a single receiving or a couple of receiving schools, this just shows the data for Ida B. Wells.
There's the enrollment from a high of 150 in 2223 to 84 currently. And then the data about the facility below. The fiscal impact is $2,128,378 in savings with a net of 21 positions impacted. There are no buses at Ida B. Wells. This map just shows you the location in the middle. The black dot is Ida B. Wells and the schools surrounding. The Abbey Hill, Riverview, Hamilton, Cummings, LaRose, and BTW are the schools with the most students who, they're zoned to those schools. They attend Ida B. Wells. Did create a chart. It didn't, doesn't look like it made it to the slide, but it shows you the 18 schools. But again, most of the students at Ida B. Wells come from those schools represented. And finally, this is the Lucy Elementary consolidation plan. You may recall that in 2023, a new state law went into effect that prohibits school districts from operating schools within the geographic boundaries of another municipal school district. So right now Lucy Elementary is in the Millington Schools Zone and we have until June 30, 2027, to deed that over to them and move our students. So the proposal here is just to transfer the building to Millington early and zone the students to Woodstock and we can then stop maintaining that building. It has $2.5 million of needs over the next two years. Receiving school programming there. Again, we'll take feedback at community.
And similarly, you have the current data for Lucy Elementary and then the current data for Woodstock Middle. And as Ms. Stewart has said, it would, Woodstock would become a K8.
And there you see the enrollment numbers fluctuating kind of within the same ranges. The, the FCIs of the schools are fairly similar with 8% at Lucy and 10% at Woodstock. And we are currently replacing the bleachers and painting the gym at Woodstock so that Lucy students benefit from that. And we will also come with a list for all of these consolidation proposals, a list of facility improvements that we would like to make at every receiving school to be considered. Fiscal impact, $931,000, net of seven positions impacted, and an addition of one bus will be necessary here. And finally, there's the map with the red dots again being the Lucy Elementary students that we are talking about rezoning to Woodstock, K8. That's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Chair McKinney.
Thank you. Thank you for this robust report. I do have a, a couple of observations. One of the things I would like to suggest that you all do is this basically the information you're going to provide during the community sessions, you know, sort of a layman sort of, so that everybody understands.
Yes.
I think one thing that would be helpful is for people to see what the current programming is in their schools and then what they're going to be going to. And that, that would be very, very helpful for people to say, I'm not losing anything, I'm gaining. So you get them a little closer to understanding why we're doing what we're doing. Then, I'm sorry, when you go to the school performance profiles, the SPS, they're, they're numbers, like growth level 3.1. I don't know what that means in terms of, on a scale of one to five. And so that would be helpful to have sort of a legend for us to understand what that, those, those really mean.
Sure.
And then just a question for the Chickasaw one. I was looking at the numbers, school enrollment and facilities profile, and I was looking at the numbers. They were sort of like correlated from Chickasaw Middle to Westside High. So were those students already going to Westside High?
No.
West, I'm sorry, Westwood. Were they already going to Westwood?
No, the, the, we go to the next one, um, next one.
Chickasaw Middle and Westwood.
Are you talking about this one or the data with the enrollment?
The one that's stu, school enrollment and facilities profile.
One more. Yeah, one more. So there's the enrollment and no, the Chickasaw Middle School kids go to Chickasaw.
No, no, I'm saying is their middle school.
Yeah.
And I'm looking like, were they already moving over to Westwood?
Chickasaw's zoned to Westwood and Mitchell.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Chickasaw's zoned to Westwood and Mitchell.
Okay.
But more of the students are zoned to Westwood than they are to Mitchell.
Okay, and so that's another highlight to sort of let people know as well that the students were already going to those buildings, so we're just putting them there a little early.
Gotcha.
And I think, yeah, that's, that's all I have right now. Thank you for, for this very good report.
Board Member Love.
My questions are to the superintendent. Um, you ready? Do the principals know about the proposal plans?
At this point, we haven't gone over the proposal plans with the principals in line with policy. First, we had to get permission from the board to be able to bring this report to you all. On tomorrow, we will move forward with meeting with the principals and the faculties to go over this report. Prior to us having the community meetings, I sent the board the dates, the proposed dates today for you all to agree if you want us to move forward with those dates and if they align with you all's calendars. But we're sharing all this, the dates for the community meetings. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You all should have an email that I sent you today. So tomorrow, we'll meet with principals and staff to go over, but per policy, we had to share the information with you all first.
I am in charge of policy and I want to revisit that because the principals are in charge of the schools. And this is a public meeting and we have news stations here. And I don't want that to be, I don't want no one, not anyone, hearing on the news first and then the principals, um, don't have nothing to say.
Yes, ma'am. However, the principals do know that their schools are possibly proposed to be consolidated, closed, or merged. The only thing they do not have at this point are the specifics, which we are sharing with you all first prior to going out and sharing it with faculty and staff.
The next question, um, Michelle Stewart, thank you for this presentation. But if it's okay with the superintendent, I would like to take you and Tito on a ride of my district. So that you can see what all is included. The map is good. The map is good. But you can see what all is included in my district, the bus services, the transportation, the crossing guards, and the going to school and coming home. Whitney doesn't have, um, on one side, there is a crosswalk. On the other side, there is not a crosswalk. And kids deserve to go to school safe and return to school safe. I said last month, what is the total number of investments that have been depleted from the schools year over year? Do you have that?
The services that's been depleted from the schools that we are proposing.
Yeah, yeah.
We can, we can look into it and get it. I apologize if the team and I forgot to deliver that information to you.
Um, two schools in my district, the principals, um, been complaining that they don't have buses. Michelle said one bus is going to be eliminated.
Yes, ma'am. I think between the two, there was a bus needed at Lucy Elementary, but the two that are in Fraser proper, both have eliminated buses. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to talk to you offline to see, can we get the buses added back? Those are elementary schools and the principals, year after year, they've been complaining that the students who walk to school don't come if it's raining or it's cold. We need the students in school every day. As far as Lucy, I understand what we're trying to do. I would just advise the interim superintendent to take a look at, um, the two schools, Woodstock Middle and Egypt Elementary. Because, um, my district goes between Amber's District and my district. And we have a chance. my district, and we have a chance to get that right.
Yes, ma'am.
Because the neighborhood that I live in, Bolton, Woodstock, Amber's Chapel, and Woodstock Middle, they all go to school in my district. And Raleigh-Egypt is right up the street.
I want to interrupt for just a moment and just remind, by policy, we have to stop and start board work session at five.
That's it?
No, at 5:30. I'm not, that's not stopping anybody from their questions. I just wanted to remind board members that I'm going, I would like to request that we roll these last two committee items onto the hill of the board work session agenda. So excuse the interruption, go right ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I, yes, ma'am. I think it would be a great idea for staff to ride the community, as we do with any schools that are being proposed for consolidation and closure. I've ridden all of these communities, I've looked at the schools personally, and I've encouraged the team to do it, because it's an extremely important decision that we're making in regards to sidewalks and buses and things like that. Prior to any consolidation, merge, or repurpose, someone from transportation will be there, will be at the community meetings, and will answer any questions that parents may have at that time. Parents, as well as any other stakeholders, can share any danger zones or walkways or paths that we need to look at and address during those times. And as we do every year before we open schools, we continue to evaluate those areas to ensure that all of the areas to and from school are safe for students.
Thank you.
Board Member Murphy?
Quick question. When will the construction start on Westwood, Mitchell, and Fairleigh?
It is my understanding that some of the project management has begun with XAI. I see Ms. Stewart shaking her head. Ms. Stewart, if you want to add some additional context, please do something.
Yes, sir, that's right. So we, my construction team, I've assigned project managers, and we are working with XAI and the principals on the project scopes. As you know, our, I think, you know, but we require that they submit all, and the MOU requires they submit all plans to us for review before they actually start any construction, so that we're sure that they are in line with the district's construction guidelines. But they're actively planning right now.
Follow-up question. Thank you. Follow-up question. There is a building on Mitchell High School grounds that we're not using. Are we going to fix that up as well? Is that included in the reconstruction of the buildings?
I will look at it.
Thank you. Can you please get that to me soon, sooner than later?
All right, yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Porter?
Yeah, I think my question is already answered a bit, because I did, I counted about 50 vacancies that we can potentially have, and so I just want to go ahead and get the word out to those people who will be impacted as soon as possible. But I didn't know you guys hadn't talked to the principals and everything yet, so.
Yes, sir, that's scheduled for tomorrow. What I've instructed the team to do is to follow up to this meeting, would be to go out to meet with those faculties. Someone from HR would be with the team, as well as our teacher associations, and we'll talk to them about finishing out the year and the opportunities that will exist if the board chooses in February to merge, close, or consolidate these schools.
But is this a part of the overall facilities plan for long-term investments and the strategic facilities plan that we've been talking about? Is this part of it?
Dr. Richmond, the students from Chickasaw Middle and Westwood High, will they be in this general population, or they be in like two separate parts of the building if we approve this?
Ms. Stewart, can you speak to how we've looked at that building?
Yes, Ms. Coleman, we will separate them as well as we can, especially the older, the oldest ones and the youngest ones. You know, there might be some cross teaching between the teachers and the children, but the students will be in separate classes and in separate areas of the building.
Yeah, we have some other 612 models in our district. For example, BTW is a 612 model, so we'll be looking at some of the best practices that are occurring at BTW and some of our other 612 models to ensure that those things occur.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Interim Superintendent, three years ago or four years ago, Raleigh-Egypt and Raleigh-Egypt Middle were combined. I would advise you to talk to Cherie Jones. She did an excellent job of keeping the students separated, and she did an excellent job at keeping the school a Level 5.
Yes, ma'am.
There being no further business, means adjourn. We're going to take a 15-minute break, a 13-minute break, so we can start on time. Thank you.